You ready up there? Okay. Welcome, everyone. School committee meeting. All the order Monday, November 23rd. Just to acknowledge visitors, Mrs. Yoli, Ms. Taylor from lunch program, and then with McBride and Brittany Kidd? Yes? Okay, I did all right. All right. All right, okay, we're all done. All right. So why don't we kick in with the minutes? Did folks have a chance to take a look at those? Comments, questions, thoughts?
You also have the two seconds, yes.
Okay. I had just one edit, I think, under the bottom, under unfinished business, about the motion. I don't think that I made the motion. I know you didn't make it because it was for you. Mike, I think you made it. Yeah. So if we could just make that correction, that'd be great. And other than that, I accept the motion to accept the minutes as corrected. Okay, all in favor? Aye. And then we had in your packet there, executive session minutes. Did we have these ahead?
You just got them now.
Just got them now. So maybe we can take just a moment and take a quick look through them. Okay, I would just note a very minor correction on these. My last name is Ian, just for accuracy. So if we can make that little tweak, that'd be great. It's all right.
Yes.
Executive, yeah. Spelling correction. Do we have a second on that? All in favor? Aye.
Consistently is spelled anyway.
Well, consistency is good. And do we have a motion on the minutes for October 26th? There were two. With the corrections spelled.
With the corrections as well?
Yes. Second? All in favor? Aye. Great, thank you. Okay. And then moving on to correspondence. We did have an email from Donna Resney with an attachment which we will talk about later in executive session regarding voluntary substitutes. So that will be for further discussion. Anything? I don't think I have anything else from correspondence for the... You wanted to, I think, speak to these letters.
The committee has outgoing correspondence. We need to bring up the minutes for prosperity and so it can be on the public record. John and I attended the Thanksgiving feast along with several other members of the community, and we had a fantastic time. And we wanted to take a moment to recognize the people who made that possible. Of course, with our Casa's support, we know that this event could never happen, but especially Mrs. Lynn Edwards and Ms. Lisa Hines for their leadership and organization of the parents in that. We'd like to thank Mr. Quadrosi and Mrs. Goodman for the preparation of their students and helping to feed the volunteers after the actual feast was over. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Gail Tivado for giving out all the invitations and making us feel so comfortable at the dinner table. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Julie Darson for setting up, taking down, and putting up with all of us parents and the kids and making it such a smooth and flawless experience. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Pam Taylor for opening up her kitchen to the parents in this town and really lending over to our kids. We really appreciate the efforts. So just a general idea of what the letter says on our behalf. On behalf of the grateful school and community, the Dennett Elementary School Committee would like to thank you for your efforts in making our Thanksgiving feast not only a possibility, but an amazing experience for all those who attended. Without your dedication to the students of our school, events like these, which are the things lifelong memories are made of, would not be possible. It was a joy to see the entire school community come together to share a meal and give a moment of thanks. And it is in that spirit in which this community returns the favor by stating publicly in the record that we are thankful for you. Thank you again for all that you do for our students and help the happy Thanksgiving. And Peter, thank you very much for being such a wonderful guest.
Thank you.
And for wearing that hat. Great. And Jason, thank you for pulling that together. Very helpful.
I'd ask for one assist for that. Mrs. Tivado, if you could send these out, that would be fantastic. I don't know what his address is. I just want him to get it before Thanksgiving.
All right. So I think that moves us on to new business, which I don't believe we have any. And then unfinished business and water treatment update.
I can report on that.
Great.
We had Garrett Keegan from Green Seal. He did come up to the Dennett on the 17th of November to gather some new water samples. If I can read you a little snippet from an email that he had sent to Christine and I, why he needed to do the new samples. We will need to address the corrosivity of the water in the treatment design and additional pH alkalinity and calcium results will be collected as required by the lead and copper rule. These will be important in choosing the treatment options. We will leave them before I can settle on final design. Usually, the most appropriate method is to control the corrosivity to prevent the release of lead rather than remove the lead after it's dissolved in the water. So that lead piece added in a little bit of a wrinkle that he needed to take into account. It's almost better that we caught it now than... The timing was actually somewhat good. As far as timetables go, Garrett said that he would need about two weeks to process the results and come up with what he thought was an appropriate plan moving forward. Wants to add more information, I'll certainly share it.
And I think that's a good piece anyways because we do tend to have slightly corrosive water in Plimpton. And it's not only for the lead pipes, but also for the copper pipes. So if you get that neutralized, it ends up being much better for the health of the plumbing system and the whole school. So that's good. And I'm glad we have a consultant who's thinking ahead on that. Any other comments, folks? Okay. Breakfast program.
Dave and Pam were kind enough to come this evening. One of the things we talked about was the trays. And last time Pam was kind enough to put together that PowerPoint about the breakfast program. And I don't know if they have any different numbers, but last I knew we were still running close to 30, I think, on an average. And I think they have some trays for us to see in prices.
All right.
So last time I was here, you asked me about the foam versus the biodegradable trays. So what I did is I contacted our vendors that we use. I didn't contact any outside vendors. I don't know if you know if you can or what the price would be. These are guaranteed prices for the year.
Yep.
So what I did was, if you would like, can I just...
Yeah, best place. Show and tell is great.
I gave you a couple. These are the foam trays that we use now. They're three cents each. So if I'm not mistaken, a few phone calls will be... A lot of the schools in the area use those because...
They're three cents each, right.
Yeah. So and then what I did is, these are the same. I just gave you a couple. These are what they call paper trays. They're 0.834 cents. They are biodegradable from one company. These are paper as well. We call it like paper number one. Also biodegradable. These are 13 cents a piece. They're a little bit better. They degrade better. And then I just would... I said the fiber ones, I got a... One of the fiber, and these are 14 cents each. They have the numbers of how many I use a year here with the cost. I would like those as well.
Yeah.
What we do is we estimate the amount of trays we can use based on lost trace information and also based on... We estimate that it would come up with $20,000 or something like that. And if you are buying this three cent tray, it's $664. And if you take the tray once in one, it's $20. That's $1722. If you take the two, it's 13 cents, which is $6697. If you have five trays, it's $20,750.
So $20,750 on an average. And that's going with 30 kids for breakfast. It has to be going over, so that's kind of an estimate. So that's obviously just... You need to figure times upon each of the trays cost. That's what they are. So...
Three cents, huh?
Yeah.
You had said you had some paper trays before.
I had not, no.
Oh, I thought you had said you had ones that were flimsy.
The paper, no, I'm sorry, the foam trays.
Do you have the flimsy ones?
Yeah, but I mean, I have no idea. Those are just like cheaper.
Yeah, the cheaper trays. I thought, I misunderstood. I thought you had said there was a paper tray that you tried at some time that wasn't.
Actually, I'm sorry, you know, it was, but it didn't have the compartments in it.
Right.
Is it a different type tray?
I can't use ones that don't have it because even with the foam trays there, the kid, you know, things, they fall off.
Sure.
And the other ones were so flimsy, they didn't have the compartments. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Oh.
So those are the things. And I got a couple samples of each of them for you.
That's a little decorated pattern on that for the actual candy, huh?
Do you know if any of those paper trays are sturdy or as sturdy as the styrofoam one? I mean, I feel like there's nothing on it. I don't know if there's anything on it.
This feels stiffer, a little stiffer, yeah. But they're not worse.
Right.
I also hate to mention with foods with high acid content and high temperature that you're better off without a styrofoam tray because of the staggering. We have low levels that can be leached into the food. Science teacher. Also, we've taken votes in the past as a committee to support initiatives for recycling. We had the gentleman from Kingston who came before us from recycling commission. Styrofoam does not die over time. We're throwing these trays away. We're going to be here for thousands of years. I'm very much opposed to supporting styrofoam usage, especially when we're trying to teach the kids to be more environmentally sensitive. It's almost... We have the choice. I prefer to avoid using styrofoam.
Double, almost.
I know it's a cost burden of about $1,100 in difference in cost per year. As one would be more than willing to try and find places to make up that cost difference. I realize that we have some problems with budget from the kitchen, and I know it's being addressed by our staff. I can't continue to support styrofoam if it's something that would end in a sense.
Yeah, just one part to talk to you. The figures of the prices that David just gave you, that's good for that just this year.
Right.
That would just, you know, go out to bands. You know, if you did do something and it did continue, you know, that is, it might, you know, be a little bit more just a... But that would be impossible, you know, till the end of the school.
It's a fair point. I mean, it's a fair point to understand that. I mean, I think typically we see things might go up, but then both kind of trend up a bit. I mean, I think what we're seeing here, and this is, you know, we see it not... It's not just to do with trays, but it's everywhere in the economy and everything is you have items where the true cost isn't actually built into the price. That's going to our economic stuff, right? Because there's no way that the actual cost of these is three cents, given that they go and sit in landfills or whatever else is going on with them. The hard part is, of course, we end up bearing it right here in a line item in a budget that's sensitive. So I think Jason makes some good points there. Do other folks have sort of thoughts at this point?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
How many months of the styrofoam do we have? How many months of the styrofoam do we currently have in-house?
On hand right now, I probably have, oh, I'm going to say three. Three or four cases of 500, so about 2,000 about? No, yeah. So two weeks.
Oh, okay. And do we have a contract? Is this on the bid list? We have a contract to buy these all year? So this year we couldn't make a change anyway?
You should put, with that price.
So we have a contract to buy stuff?
But, oh, not particularly that amount?
Not 20,000 of these trays.
Okay. Okay, great. I just wanted to be sure I was understood.
Just to put it out there, I'm not suggesting necessarily that we infringe upon the current budget, so I keep that in mind. Or am I suggesting that we throw a current stock? That would almost be contradictory to the whole thing. So I think we need to be sensitive to both of those items and understand that we need to move this in the right direction. We need to be proactive and not let this fall off to the rear end.
I remember this one. I don't know which one it was. I have it back there, is a special order. So if I was to order it, I couldn't get it shipped like I can to the other one like the next day or something like that. I don't, I can't remember now which one I ordered. I can confirm that.
I mean, I don't think we should... I mean, if we're going to change, like you said, we should do it. That's my opinion. We already budgeted for that.
Right.
Even though we don't want to use it, we... I think we have that obligation not to change a budget.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, we have some funds that are in the positives that are able to be reallocated at certain points throughout the year. We could potentially look at them in mid-budget.
And maybe that makes more sense the more in the middle of the year. I mean, we're still kind of early into the cycle so far and...
We could try a pilot with them. You know, maybe towards the end of the school year just to see how they hold up. I mean, I'm not sure of spaghetti. You know, the sauces. If they are going to leak right through, I honestly don't know.
It sounds like a...
They seem good, but it may be worth a...
Seems like a China... To me, you know, the same sort of...
Think about the ones that you did buy students for lunch.
I'm guessing also, but as I said, I'm just wondering if we tried them as a pilot. Might, you know, before we got too far.
And just so we can provide guidance here, I assume that our prettier options, and particularly the really pretty one here, are probably not what we're thinking of here. We're looking to do the economical version, provided that they...
I appreciate that you had so many choices to look at and you went out of your way to do this for us. But yes.
I just want... We don't want to assume anything here. So, okay. So I think that's sort of how we feel, is that we would prefer to move to the paper. We want to do it in a way that's thoughtful, that addresses the budget. And I do like the idea of piloting it before we get into it and find out in September, halfway through September, that we have a month of stuff that doesn't really work. I won't make your life more difficult over this, so excellent.
Now, can I say, well, next time I serve a pasta or anything that's...
Yeah, put them on there, see what it does.
Something I've worked on there and just knew that... So it should work.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Absolutely. Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments on school lunch? But again, thank you very much for digging into that and getting the numbers. Appreciate that. Absolutely. Great.
It's nice that you want to go.
Thank you, boys, for coming. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
All right, on to standing committees. Administrative review.
Needs to be scheduled.
Needs to be scheduled. Negotiations that we will talk about in executive session. Union 31.
No meeting.
No meeting so far. PAC.
I wondered, some news I'd like to bring to the committee's attention is that collaborators on the South Shore have put together a preliminary document that's going to outline all of their programs. It's almost like a course catalog. And it says where they are, what the hours are, what services they provide. And they'll be on every single collaborator's website by the end of the year also.
So it should help with directing services that you... Right. Excellent.
Wonderful document. Very happy to see it.
Excellent. Policy, we had a meeting a week or so ago? Week ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago?
10th?
I have no idea. We were there.
We were there. We absolutely were there.
We actually did not have a full complement of folks. We did take an initial review through a couple of the policies that were suggested by MASC. We are having a follow-up meeting tonight, following this meeting at 6:30. So more to come on that next time. Anything else to add?
Perfect.
Okay. Capital improvement. I think water treatment sort of covered that for the moment. And Jason, back to you for legislative agent.
I'll try and make this as relevant to the elementary committee as possible. I went to the joint conference down in Hyannis and attended several seminars and just wanted to bring some of the information back to the table. The Department of Early Childhood Education and Care has been working on reinforcing social emotional structure in the curriculum. They noted that play-based activities in the kindergarten have reduced down to about 2% of the children. They're trying to increase the amount of play in the actual person from the DESI standpoint that actually can get to engage. I know as an upper school teacher, the discrete skills of how to play a game, take turns, lose with crease, are things that students now are lacking in a large part. And I believe it's because of the push-down in curricula to the lower elementary grades in attempt to get higher test scores. We're trying to finally acknowledge the fact that children need to learn these social norms in order to be more successful with students in the long run. Also, I went to a seminar on some diversity training, especially around the idea of transgender students. And was reminded that there is federal and state statutes that protect the rights of those students. And as committee members, we need to be aware of those statutes. Other than that, a lot of the things I went to, high school related, the fact that we on the South Shore are suffering from the opiate crisis. There are actually five high schools in Massachusetts called recovery high schools that are designed to help students who are committed to their sobriety get a diploma and go on to college potentially. There's 50 seats at each of these schools, and currently all of them are under-enrolled. So it's an asset. It's run mostly by collaborators and institutes. Their tuition is around a foundation. It's not as expensive as a traditional collaborative program. They can't provide some specialized services like a normal high school could, not a collaborative, say, per se. But one real problem there is there's no state funding or refunding for transportation. Some districts who send their students there are either inclined or not inclined to pay for the transportation. It's something that the state houses looking at.
Thank you. That's the highlights?
Those are the highlights.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Venido, would you like to give us the principal's report?
Absolutely, thank you. We have not had much change in our enrollment right now. We're holding the 216 students, two through six. We have some important dates to remember. And I'd like to kind of piggyback what Mr. Frazier said earlier about the feast. We are one of the people that came out to help us to make that event happen. It's incredible. So thank you to everybody in the community for assisting on that. Coming up on Wednesday, we have an early release day. There's a 12 noon dismissal. No lunch will be served. I'll send out a Blackboard Connect message as a reminder because then it'll be 12 o'clock, we'll kind of catch people off guard. The 26th and 27th, we are off for Thanksgiving break. And then the month of December is here. On December 3rd, we have our Grade 5 Korean Creek Zoo, from 11:35 to 1:45. On December 7th, we have our Citizen of the Month Assembly at 2 o'clock. On December 11th, Citizen of the Month Pizza Lunch. And the girls' club have their craft beer from 6 to 9. Then on December 12th, the girls' club have the bigger craft beer that's from 9 to 4. On December 17th, we have our winter concert. That should be at 7 o'clock. It's not on there. And on December 21st, we will be back here at 4:30 for school committee meeting. Busy times ahead.
Fantastic. All right. Any update on Casa?
They just finished the Thanksgiving. And the next thing on the agenda is the holiday bazaar.
Thank you. All right. I think it is over to you.
I apologize for stepping out. I realized that your packets, the copy of the PowerPoint you had was on only every other page. If you look at the color pages for the pages you had, how about that? So it's a challenge. Oh, I was just giving technology. Oh, okay. I think I can do this.
We have confidence in you.
Well, thank you. All right, well, thank you. And some folks were able to see this participation, this PowerPoint, when I presented it to the Silver Lake School Committee. So I apologize for the repeat. Hopefully, second time through will be just as exciting as the first time through. I wanted to start with an overview of our student profiles throughout the region. So what you're looking at in this slide is the breakdown of students that are receiving special education support services through their IEPs in each of the communities. So for example, in the town of Plimpton, in the town of Plimpton, we have 53 students that are receiving special education services. That is not to say that within the Dennett Elementary, there are 53 students that are receiving special education services. Again, that's by town. So the next slide... Oops. Yes, so the next slide... I can't beep that. I can't not beep that. So the next slide that you have here is a little description of how our student population is provided by the community based on special education services that are received.
Yeah. Yeah, the black and white's easier.
I'll get everyone ready. The fancy red one. So the next slide looks specifically at the town of Plimpton. So as I said, we have a total of 53 students in the town of Plimpton that are receiving special education services. In the Dennett Elementary School, we have 32 students that are receiving special education services. The remainder are students that are receiving services in a variety of placements, out-of-district placements. So we have 21 students that are receiving out-of-district placements, six in different private or other collaborative settings in the area, one of whom is a residential placement. We have three students that are in what we term our in-district, out-of-district programs. So what that means is that we've been fortunate enough to establish a regional program that, at the present, they're housed at Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate. So those are students, if there's, there are three students in the town of Plimpton that are tuitioned into those regional programs, as I said, that are currently based in either KES or KIS. And you have 12 little ones in our integrated preschool program. So that gives a breakdown of where all our students are. The out-of-district tuition costs are about $409,000. Preschool tuitions are at $217. And trans- Preschool tuitions are at two-seventeen and transportation costs associated with all of this is one-nineteen. Any questions with that? I've provided you a similar breakdown for the towns of Kingston and Halifax. So you can see, for example, in the town of Kingston, there are thirty-eight students in Kingston Elementary and seventy-eight students in Kingston Intermediate and ninety-four that are out-of-district. Forty-two in private placements or other collaborative placements, thirty in the integrated preschool program, I'm sorry, twenty-two in the integrated preschool program and thirty that are participating in the out-of-district, in-district program that I described between KES and KIS. And finally, also the town of Halifax. So you can see in the town of Halifax, there are seventy-six students that are in the Halifax Elementary School that are receiving special education services and forty-two that are in a variety of out-of-district placements. Any questions on those slides? The next, again, didn't show on that, but you have it in your packet. Just a description of the tuitions and transportations by location. So you can see Kingston is coming in over three million or just under four, actually. So now that I've explained a little bit about how we're spending the money, I wanted to show you a little bit about what can help support our funding. So one of the things that helps support our funding for these costly out-of-districts is what's called circuit breaker. And essentially, the state has said that there is, there is a general expectation that communities can pay roughly forty-one, forty-two thousand dollars on an individual student placement. Any dollar amount above that and we become eligible for reimbursement of a percentage of that. Okay? So the number that I referred to, the forty-two thousand, that's what they call foundation. And again, any dollar amount above that, we are eligible for reimbursement on a portion of that. That reimbursement amount varies from year to year. A few years back, I don't know if you remember when we had the ARRA grants where we had that additional funding coming in. Circuit breaker reimbursement was as low as twenty-four percent, I believe. Since the ARRA grants have left, that reimbursement amount has gone up to, I've seen it anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-four percent. And that's a figure that we won't know until the state does their math and then they'll let us know. So Christine Healy and I take a look at the total claim and then a projection of what's an anticipated reimbursement. We try to be conservative and do ranges anywhere from sixty to seventy-five percent or even fifty-five to seventy-five percent. And that's how Christine on her end can then calculate for the individual communities what the reimbursement would look like. What I did for you here is to show you, for example, in Plimpton, my claim for, well, the very first task that I had when Mrs. Blackwood brought me in July first was to do circuit breaker for the, for the previous fiscal year. All right? So I collected all of the sums of all of the out-of-district tuitions, determined which ones would meet foundation and then did the actual circuit breaker claim. The total claim for the town of Plimpton was three-hundred-seventy-two thousand. Okay? So of that claim, minus foundation is a hundred and sixty-two. So we're eligible for a reimbursement of a portion of the one-sixty-two. Okay? So based on a calculation of approximately sixty-five percent reimbursement, that will reimburse the town of Plimpton a hundred and five thousand dollars. That's not a solid number. Again, we're waiting to see what the calculated reimbursement rate is from the state. But that would be something reasonable to expect in terms of a range.
Marie, I'm going to put you on the spot, but if we get the reimbursement as anticipated and that money comes back from where it is.
Excellent question. The intent of the reimbursement is to help offset the costs of our out-of-district placements. So as I shared with you, the cost for tuitions for Plimpton out-of-district is four-hundred-nine thousand dollars. So this number, we apply to the out-of-district tuition costs for the town of Plimpton.
For FY sixteen.
Yes.
I know that confuses some people, that the reimbursement from FY fifteen covers FY sixteen expenses. So I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Any other questions about that? The other source of financial support for the region is an entitlement grant. It's coded two-forty, so we talked about the two-forty grant. This is an entitlement grant and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they notify us what the entitlements are per town. So for the town of Plimpton, it's just over fifty-one thousand dollars. And I wanted to give you some regional perspective on the money that we receive from the two-forty grant that's applied throughout the region. Okay? Now, the two-forty grant, we can, they're very clear on what we can spend them, that entitlement funds on and what we cannot. And clearly, it needs to help support programming for special education students. One of the avenues that we've selected to spend the two-forty fund is to apply it to the salaries for some of our teachers and our teaching assistants. So a couple of suggestions, a couple of select, suggestions that I've made to Superintendent Blackwood is that when we take the two-forty grant and apply it to teacher salaries, they automatically, the Department of Ed automatically deducts MTRS, mass teacher retirement funds. That's money that basically comes right off the top. So if we're saying that the Silver Lake two-forty entitlement for FY sixteen is nine-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars and we've applied seven teachers, seven special education teachers throughout the region to that grant, then that's forty thousand dollars right off the top that is deducted for mass teacher retirement and it's money that we can't use here within the region. So one of the proposals I've made for next year's grant preparation is that we take a look at how we're allocating those funds and perhaps apply more of the funds to teaching assistants and less of the funds to teachers. So it will give us an opportunity to have basically an additional forty thousand dollars to spend throughout the region proportionate to the towns. Okay? How that impacts all of us as we're preparing the budget now is that it'll look like on our, on our budget spreadsheets, the number of teachers that we have in the town of Plimpton, that will look like it's going higher and the number of teaching assistants will look like it's going lower. This is still a cost-neutral concept, though. We're not hiring new teachers. We're just funding them from a different source. So as we get closer to budget time and we're talking about the number of teachers that we're funding in the budget for Plimpton, we'll have a broader discussion of how many of them were originally slotted for the two-forty grant and that we're recommending to transition into the local budget and reversely so. How many teaching assistants are we looking to take out of the local budget and put into the two-forty? Good. Okay. The next slide, I wanted to spend some time talking about the current programs that we have here within the region. We have what's referred to as the developmental learning center. And this is a program that services a profile of students with a variety of disabilities, but primarily either intellectual, neurological, autism spectrum. And we have a nice opportunity right now where we have a program at Kingston Elementary. We have a program at Kingston Intermediate. We also have a program at the middle school. And we also have a program at the high school that is designed to meet students of this profile. And I think that all four of them are, are doing a very nice job. The other program we have is what's referred to as the structured learning center. And that is designed to support students that have difficulties with executive functioning or some social emotional challenges. At present, the region has one program at Kingston Intermediate. And I put the teachers' names up there because I think people can, can relate or have related to each of these programs as Mrs. Savalli's program or Ms. Hammond's program without really looking at them in terms of their titles, developmental learning or structured learning. So I was hoping that that might help with the, the overall description. So at present, those are the programs that we are providing from a regional perspective. When I look at where I would like to see things grow and move in, in the direction, I'd like to see us look at two different things. One is what I would refer to as more of a therapeutic learning center, which is, again, at present, what is shaped and characterized as our structured learning program. I think that there is definitely a need there for this. When I look at that level of need, you can see on the bottom of this slide, we currently have thirty-five students in the region that are receiving special education support services under that classification of social emotional impairment. Of those thirty-five, twenty-two of them are currently between grade seven and twelve. So you can definitely see that there's a larger population of students between middle and high school at this point in time. Of the students that we have in total, eight of them are currently out-of-district. And we have fourteen that we're concerned about and watching very closely between the middle school and the high school. So I see this as sort of the next step for us. And this is a proposal that I'll be making in a more formal way to the committee. But I do see that we can target the students between the middle school and the high school to see how we can develop that therapeutic learning center to address the needs of the students that are currently in that building to prevent referrals to costly out-of-districts. Establish our own program for grade seven through twelve and then in time, hopefully, bring back some of the students that we've sent out of district because we just haven't had the programs. Any questions on that? The next area that I'd like us to explore as a group is, as I said, we, I think we've done a really nice job with our developmental learning center. And if you look at the very bottom of that slide, you'll see that we currently have fifty-eight students that are receiving special education services on the regional level that have a primary disability within the autism spectrum. Of the fifty-eight, eleven of them are out-of-district. So what that says to me is that we really have done a nice job creating the programs that we need to meet as many needs of our students in district as we, as we can. The concern I have is that, as I've noted, one program at each grade level or each building level. I think we're at a point right now that those programs, as good as they are, they're starting to burst at the seams a little bit. And I think that the profile of students, we're seeing some changes in that and some range of services that I'd really like to see us start looking conceptually as a two-tiered program or two levels of programming. And that's actually what I've been doing currently, meeting with the current staff, looking at the student population that each of our programs have, how we would better classify and group appropriately the students that are within these programs and what other students are just out there on the edges. But because these programs are currently so full, we're not meeting their needs as successfully as we could. So that's a presentation that I'll be making to you down the road as well, the expansion and division of the programs that we currently have.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And forgive me if this, if I'm like way off over here somewhere. But the, I noticed that the developmental learning center, there's a program at Kingston Elementary and Intermediate, but there's nothing at Halifax or Plimpton. It's elementary. I'm assuming that's because there's nobody that qualifies or?
No. Do you remember when I talked about what we considered or call the in-district, out-of-district programs? So what that means is any student, if they're in Halifax or Plimpton, they can access that developmental learning center in Kingston. And we get them there. We drive them to and from. So we would tuition in a student from Plimpton into the developmental learning center in either KES or KIS.
Okay. So my, my, that, that makes sense. I'd be very explaining that. My next question is that like the future program, the therapeutic learning center that you mentioned. You're, it, you're targeting like the middle school and the high school levels, the seven through twelve?
For starters.
For start, I mean, is that something that, I mean, I don't know what's involved. Like, you know, what the, how far along kids need to be developed to get benefits out of it. But is that something like you could start at the elementary's level to try to lessen the burden at the later levels?
Yes. Right now, we have a, a, a foundation of a program in Mrs. Savalli's program over at KIS. I'm looking to define that better and to expand that more than it currently is. So right now, that is helping students that are in grades three to six. And again, that's something that any student within the region would certainly be eligible to access. Okay? I'm starting with the high school because of the, the current need in the student population that is currently there that I feel strongly that we can get this up and running sooner rather than later. Okay? But yes, absolutely, it can be expanded down to the kindergarten levels as well. The reason why our in-district, out-of-district, we need to come up with a better phrase for that.
Intra-district.
Intra-district. Ooh, intra-district.
Intra-district, okay.
That's very good.
They're currently held in Kingston because of space and space and numbers. And that's really, it just made the most sense when the programs were being created, but based on space and numbers, that we would hold them there. So it's not exclusive to any particular town or community.
So if a Plimpton or Halifax child is in that, you said you get them to back and forth?
Mm-hmm.
They take a cab.
So they.
Literally.
Plimpton, Plimpton cab?
No.
So you can see here on the Plimpton chart, there are three Silver Lake in-district program placements. So in Plimpton, K through six, you have three students that are participating in one of the programs, whether it's the developmental learning at KES or the one at KIS or structured learning at KIS. But we have three students.
So they, they go to school there?
Yep.
So they, okay. I'm just trying to understand a little bit. All right. Thank you. That's a great question.
Yeah.
And also at the high school level for the developmental piece you were talking about, there isn't the program now. So that's why there's a greater need because, I mean, you have a program three through six that is similar. And then.
For the therapeutic?
Boom, you're in middle school and high school and.
Boom.
Boom. Right. And not only is it different, but it's, there isn't that same level of potential support.
Where do those kids go now? The ones that don't, the kids that are in the, is it Mr. Cavalli's?
Mr. Savalli.
Savalli's room? Where do they transition to once they hit the middle school?
It's very individualized and we look at level of need and we look at least restrictive. So what, what I mean by all of that is that if we have a student in district that is leaving us for grade six to transition into grade seven, my first question to the team would be, does something appropriate for the student currently exist in the middle school? If it doesn't currently exist, is it feasible and realistic to create it? If it's not, let's take a look at the profile of the needs of the student. And with parent consent, we send referral packets out to various placement options. And I always strive to look someplace close to home so we don't have students that are, are driving further and further and further away from their home community and getting more and more disconnected from their home community. So we always look locally. Parents, I join parents, we go on tours, we see if it's the right fit. It's, it's a very involved process to make sure that the fit for the placement and the student is absolutely most appropriate. So I can't say specifically where, where they are, but there are a number of placements that, in a wide range for our students. But as I said, ultimately, my goal is to complete and duplicate programs here. So there is a seamless transition from the middle school, from the elementary to the middle and from the middle to the high school. Any other questions about that? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Onto curriculum. Uh, report cards.
Report cards. So last year was a big year with report cards and I was posting to Marie, which is like, and she started on July first. And when I started on July first, Joy handed me some outcomes from a report card committee that were in June prior to my arrival and said, this is where we are. This is where we're thinking about going. Take this information and try and move it into. and said, this is where we are, this is where we're thinking about going, take this information and try and move it into something. And one of my first sort of, this is my first unearthed, was that um the committees had met as silos. So that they each grade level met, but there was no this way. There was no sort of like communication from kindergarten to first grade, first grade to second grade. And so I sat with Joy and I said, we're making some changes, sixth grade's moving to a middle school model of report card and then let's sort of take this and um I gave a proposal to her for a series of steps that we would go through in order to revamp the report cards. And um the teachers are really knee-deep into this right now and I'm even coming up with more things that I think we should do moving forward to sort of even make them better. Um, so it's definitely still a work in progress, but um the initial steps are, are ready to sort of be unleashed to parents in some regard. So the first slide here, this slide has actually been made into a video um that I narrate and I introduce. Um, I worked with the high school and on the day that report cards go home, there will be an email last that goes to parents that links to the video and gives some information, so on that day, all the school parents will get um some of the information that was presented in a newsletter at the beginning of the year plus a link to the YouTube video so they can all have, invite me to the dinner table if it's a matter of. It's very, it was very, very strange for me to do, very hard to watch yourself, but um, but I think that it was a good way to present it. Linda Redding at the high school with a high school student um helped to sort of set it to music and get the pacing on it. So hopefully it'll be informative for families too to look through and eventually it'll link onto the website for the district too. But it outlines sort of the timeline here, and the reason that I sort of put this out here is that really step one was that um sixth grade adopted letter grades. Um, and that was a big transition for last year that we worked through. Um, and then after that, as we started to look at a, a systematic approach to looking at the report cards and making some changes, um, we started with these three questions, which were, what information do report cards need to communicate to families? What information do they need to report, communicate to students? And what information do they need to communicate to teachers? And we surveyed all of the staff and the administration based on those three questions. And they became our guiding questions in sort of our vision. So when we were doing the process and we came up to, I don't know what to do, we could refer back to these and say, well, where does it fall within our questions? And where does it fall within our goals? Um, so that happened. Um, in the winter then, we met with some teachers and we started to draft the report cards and we also drafted a new progress report and made a decision that the new progress report would be launched with the new report cards. So even though it was sort of there and in place and is, we're still tweaking a few little things along the way, um, but sort of working on that piece of it. So the way that the committees worked was that I met with two, it was myself and then four, three teachers, so four of us total, that were, one teacher representing each grade level and each building. So you had a K one and two teacher that each represented Dennett, Halifax and Kingston and each of the grade levels. And it was just the four of us and we sat for forty-eight hours and took about seventeen different report cards from all throughout Massachusetts and used them as benchmarks to sort of guide the process and decide what did we like, what did we not like, what was important. So I did that first with K one and two. We then got through the MCAS season and I met with three, four, five, um, building on what had happened K one and two. And then after that, over the end of the school year, I met with all of the specialists, so all the art teachers across the district. Um, and then we, and the big last step in that was to meet with librarian and technology teachers and we added that into the grades three, four and five report cards, so that was sort of a new addition. So then the last thing is that um the new report cards are launched sort of this fall and the first thing that came out was progress reports. And um it was smooth. With, but again, we're um, David Murphy here, you'll hear more about him, he's really been helping to help him use technology and make this process easier for our teachers. And so we're unearthing a few things there. Um, so if you look at the report card, we had some very clear goals that we tried to keep in mind, which were this idea communicating in a language that's easily understood by students and families. Every time we came across a vocabulary word that we said, I'm not sure if a parent would understand that, then we went back to, is this information that a parent needs to know? Because if it, they don't understand it and they can't connect with it, then is it something we should be communicating in report cards? Or do we need to state it differently? Or is it something important for a teacher to know, but not necessarily for the family to know? And how do we balance that? Um, we also did a consistent feedback on what we'd call the skills for learning. Um, and that's placed at the beginning of each of the report cards. And we looked at those as, those are the critical skills that in order for a student to be able to be successful in the classroom, we need to use these first. If a child can't attend to the learning, then how do we actually go about the learning? So focusing on those and putting some emphasis there. We wanted to make sure that the report cards communicated and celebrated student achievements in consistent language that acknowledged their effort. Um, and then we wanted to effectively communicate strengths and areas for improvement. And then balance communication on content, skills and overall informant, performance in grades three through five. So that's the big change that happened, is that grades three, four and five are now students who are receiving information on, but I'm gonna loosely use the word standards, and also they're receiving an overall performance grade, so a letter grade. So in mathematics, for third grade students, your student receives a letter grade and then some information on some content areas below that. We updated our key for the growth, um, that's the four, three, two, one scale that is still being used K to five. We made it simplified, the statements are shorter, more concise. Uh, we used language that enabled more opportunities to celebrate students for performing beyond the expectations. We modified the standards to focus on one skill at a time. Prior, the standards were written where it might say that the student understands the use of time, money and data, all on one line. And it was difficult for a teacher to say, well, they're really good with time, but they're struggling with their coins. And how do I grade all of that in one standard? So we really just separated those out. And then it was important to maintain this consistent language kindergarten through the fifth grade. So that's the same key for growth all the way through. And then this addition of overall performance grades, so five key areas that students are receiving academic grades in, reading, writing, math, science and social studies. Um, and that, we talked a little bit about, and this has become more, these kids that are in fifth grade have never ever received a letter grade, but they all get it. And they all understand it, and so recognizing that, and um, Joy and I were talking about this, like, what's part of our culture? So how do we motivate kids and how do we show kids that they're making growth and making achievements? Um, that is something that our parents can understand and our students can understand. And so then we really stuck with these sort of very strong intended outcomes about celebrating student growth, guiding next steps and then effectively changing. And then, and then the last is um, I do have a slide here that has the thank yous on there. Um, David Murphy is a technological wizard and a Ph.D. grad. Um, and so he came to the district last year and was able to do all the code to write the report cards, to put them into Power School, which is not a simple feat. Um, he was a wonderful person to work with, he even um, even down to the, the symbol here, he redid it and um brought it in and firmed up the lines on it and stuff. And so it was very important for him that these were a professional document that presented in a very professional manner. And I think that that was um a real critical piece that was important to me. So I came to him with drafts that were done and said, I want them to look like this. And he said, no, we'll just make them look even better. And so, and then um, there's the list of the teachers that were part of it. So Liz Goodman and Donna Rizmini were both of the representatives here, as with um, all of your specialist teachers were part of the committee. And um, and that, that in itself, bringing those teachers together was just a nice opportunity to help them meet and discuss and make some curriculum decisions within the district.
Hmm, yeah.
And it's still going on.
Yeah.
But it's, it is still, I mean, teachers are, I mean, teachers are, are working really hard right now to understand these and, you know, we, we need rubrics to go with them and that's the next step in the process of it. Um, and so we'll continue to work on these, but the commitment is that these will not change for three years. Um, and that the intention of that is that it's three years to understand the strengths and weaknesses within it, um, three years to improve upon them and how we interpret them. Um, and also in three years, which leads into my next presentation, we'll have new science standards. And so we'll be able to drill down into the science component of the report card and update that piece. And that's part two.
Right, so just, just to be clear, because it took me a minute and that could just be me, um, but for anyone who's watching, so the, the consistently often, sometimes rarely, that goes for the skills for learning section.
Correct.
And then the next two keys go for reading, writing, mathematics, history and science, where the overall performance will have a letter grade and the other will have the uh one through four rating. And then of course, one through four for the specialist areas.
And prior, the specialists had had their own scale, so that was one of the things we worked, so the specialists were really great. I said, I kind of presented, I said, can we make this key for growth work for you too?
Right.
And so I thought that, it was a, it was just a nice conversation to see them sort of, and I kind of just stepped back and said, you know, here's where we are, and so.
Right.
I have a question as well, Ms. Chair.
Please.
Melissa and Peter, um, how are you going to support the communication that NA doesn't necessarily mean that a kid isn't doing their job, job or a teacher isn't necessarily doing their job? So when a parent gets a report card for term one and they see an NA, how are we gonna communicate that? That's just a standard that's yet to be covered in the curriculum thus far over the year?
So one of the things that was really intentional is that there are no NAs in English. So the only place an NA comes up is now in math. So we thought that that was easier for a parent to understand because the idea is that, oh, my kid's not doing that yet. I haven't seen that come home in homework. Where math is really progression, where we wrote all of the reading, writing and language speaking and listening standards so that they could be assessed all year long. And that was very intentional. But I, I will add that to my notes, you know, to when the memo goes out, because I think that, those are the kind of questions that I think I'm so entrenched in it, I'm like, well, of course you would know.
It's amazing work that you and the staff have done, I just wanna make sure that um you can say it once instead of saying it a million times. And I know even when you say it once, sometimes you still have to say it a million times, but as it gets worked into the culture of the town. But thank you for work on the report cards, I know it's a not good task.
You know, I, it's, you know, Joy has been really integral in sort of like a feedback and scouting board on this and it's sort of, I did this in my old school district and I like it, like, I like this process, this sort of systematic look at something.
She's starting counseling soon.
So yeah. You know, it's um, and I think that um, it really was the product of the district that I feel that I helped facilitate. But um, you know, these were the ideas of the teachers, these were supported by the teachers, this transition is being absorbed by the teachers right now. Um, and they're still working through it, and I think Brittany can attest to the fact that um, it's, you know, again, you're looking at something that you don't know and what does this mean and how do I exactly, and what do I have in my classroom that references this? And, and there's been, you know, still lots of emails about the process, so.
Great.
Any other questions on that? Science curriculum updates. So pretty big um deal in, on October twentieth, when Massachusetts officially came out with the draft of the new science standards for public comment. We haven't missed the public comment period, but it did go until November twentieth. But there is a link on here that if you're interested in looking at that, um, the new standards are significantly different. Much more of a dramatic change than what we went through with the ELA and math changes. So it's a very exciting time for us, but it's also one that we're still trying to sort of unearth all the different pieces of it and what it's gonna look like. I have been working with twenty-nine teachers across the district who have been actively switching to the new standards. What is uncommon is that these new standards have been out for a while. We have seen them and been working with them and gone to presentations on them since, I think about two thousand and eleven. They started to talk about them and then in two thousand and thirteen, um, we really got to see a draft version of them. Um, but they've been around for a while and Massachusetts was really intentional in saying that we wanna work on this, but we also know the teachers have just received a lot of information around ELA and math, so we're just gonna put them out there and we'll just kind of keep slowly working towards it. But last year, the um commissioner for science said, you can go. Jake Foster gave us the go-ahead to move towards the new standards. And there are some districts in Massachusetts that are all completely already using the new standards. And then there's those of us who will be part of the three-year transition. I saw it as an opportunity, my background is as a science teacher and um I think that it's an opportunity for us to bring a high level of engagement and sort of transform our science curriculum and the options and increase more opportunities for STEM within our classrooms by moving and pushing and being sort of proactive in the transition to the new standards. Um, so we are piloting three different curriculums this year. We're looking at them from a variety of standpoints. We brought in some National Geographic Explorer science magazines to look at them from a nonfiction standpoint of just a, you know, a monthly reader that kids bring in as part of the curriculum. We did a training, we have interactive science curriculum, that training is not gonna be on twelve-four, that was canceled, but we are gonna do it on February fourth. We did an inspiring science training on eleven thirteen, which is a completely digital platform, which is very new. And we're sort of all doing this a little bit. Um, there isn't a teacher's manual, there is, it's all online. And the program comes with student workbooks that we're all kind of, we're, we're not, we're not really like strong in favor at all about it, but we like the process and we like the curriculum and you can use the online piece and print off as a teacher what you want, but there are leveled readers that go with each of these series. So in my mind, it's an opportunity to bring a whole lot of rich literature into the classrooms under the umbrella of science, build our nonfiction libraries within the classrooms and then enrich our science experiences through more of um a probe approach where you give kids a problem and ask them to investigate it. Um, so a simple example is that um, at the training we went to, there was a bag of cookies and a Ziploc bag on the table and the activity said, imagine that those, it was a story about how they've been in a backpack. And all of us have found the Ziploc bag of goldfish in the bottom of our child's backpack or some other food product that was in there for a little too long. And so it was a question about mass and it was asking like, has the mass changed? Because, you know, well, it came to this line in the Ziploc bag and now it only comes to this line. And so it was a probing question to ask kids about to sort of get to their, and this is what you would do before you even taught any of the unit on the understanding of mass and the conservation of matter. So approaching science from more that direction and that standpoint, so it's not about necessarily that you've learned these fifteen vocabulary words, but can you take those vocabulary words and apply them in a situation and explain the phenomenon and what you're able to see? So I think teachers got pretty excited, the training was phenomenal, I mean, everything that's been brought into the district has been free. All the curriculum materials have been free, all the training is free. So we're sort of working our way through and sort of thinking about, from a couple of different perspectives. Do we need more than just an online access? Do we need leveled readers? Do we need a magazine subscription at the upper levels to increase some opportunities for more literature in the classroom? Um, so I think that we're all very, very open about it and looking at it, but um, but the exciting thing is that we do have hundreds and hundreds of free nonfiction books that have all been given away to the classrooms. And teachers are using those and utilizing those. Um, and, you know, the National Geographic Explorer is a traditional hardbound textbook. The other resources are more of a workbook with an online subscription. And so we're, we're also teetering with that and thinking about that and what fits best in a kindergarten classroom might not be what fits best in a fifth grade classroom, um, and looking at all of those pieces. But um, I listed the teachers down the bottom there, those are sort of my go-to in this building. But I will tell you that in this building, due to its size, almost all of the students are part of the pilot. Because it was, it's difficult, some of them in one grade level, one teacher teaches science to both classrooms. Um, so I worked to get enough curriculum materials for both classrooms, so that's there.
And I assume, I assume that, um, you know, we spent a decent amount of time talking about this last budget cycle, but that some of this would, would also depending on what we choose, impact how many computers we have or need. Uh, or do we have enough to, to circulate around with Chromebook cards if it's online?
So a little, a lit, a little bit, but not necessarily.
Okay.
Um, you know, if I was a teacher and I was adopting the inspiring science curriculum, if I had an online subscription and an ability to project in my room, which all of your teachers do and they have great interactive whiteboards that are really helpful. And then I was able to have some very basic science materials, scales, you know, um, some ways to measure. It's not, we're not really looking at high-tech science requirements to do this.
Okay.
And there is a wealth of materials in these buildings. Um, one of the things that I plan to do over the summer and really starting at the end of the school year is ask for all the science materials to be brought to one central location. And we're, we're talking about like dissecting science in the buildings, because there are a lot of kids.
Brittany, your face is hysterical. I'm sorry.
You missed it.
Face was like, wah!
What did I do?
Yeah.
There's so much stuff.
I've seen those files.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there also might be a forty-yard dumpster, you know, that might, you know, need to go with it too. Um, but, um, but it, it's time to figure out what we have because I feel very strongly that with some well-thought-out science exploration projects and a gift card to Walmart, you can do a ton in your classroom really effectively, um, and not spend a lot of money. Um, so I think that, um, this last presentation we went to was really insightful for the teachers to see these quick probes that were really fun, you know, and I was like, I, I don't wanna go do that. Like, I liked doing it as a doll. You know, so you can see, but again, we sat there in a room with K to five teachers that had science misconceptions. And so looking at a program too, that builds in professional development for the teacher. So this one we looked at, said, before you teach this as a teacher, you go here and you have your college mini lesson so that you remember what this is. And I think that that piece is also critical when we're asking teachers to be math specialists and science specialists and social studies specialists, all in the same day in the same grade level. So that piece is built in there too. So I think there's some opportunities to build capacity within our teachers, provide great experiences for our kids, move to the new frameworks in a proactive way as a district, um, but realize also we have three years to get there. So once we move, we then have three years to sort of get there in a way that's, we're confident that we're doing everything that we need to do, where I think in the first year, it's baby steps.
Sounds like the only thing missing is the primer for the parents helping with the homework. Because that primer, I mean, that primer's useful, I mean, 'cause I mean, how many times you pick up something and clearly it's not gonna be science for you, but you know, you pick up one of the math papers and it's like, am I doing this right? I'm like, I have no idea. What am I doing here? And you gotta sit back and try to think about, what did I do twenty-five, thirty years ago? Um, but no, that, that's really great to be able to give the teachers that, that tool as well. Because it's not, it's certainly helpful.
And there's, um, yeah. And so back to like your question about the technology.
Yeah.
There are opportunities for kids to do like digital labs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, and work on a digital platform with a student subscription. It's just a matter of, do we need those the first year?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe not, but maybe the second year, when we've had our teachers really learning the program, they're gonna want that additional component for the kids. Um, but, you know, again, it's, these programs, they're, the National Geographic program is very simplistic in the way that it, it works and it teaches. And it goes through what are called the five E's of the lesson. So it's like these five, engage, elaborate, you know, that goes through. Um, where some of the other programs still use the five E model, but for each E, there's like six different things you could do in your classroom. And you really, as a teacher, have to go, what's realistic? Like, what can I do? And what makes sense? And what do I have to do? And what is optional to do? And so looking at how the programs sort of help teachers in that is really kind of insightful too. So it's, it's such a balance. So I, I don't really wanna spend too much more time talking because it kinda hurts. Um, but, um, but there's two more things here that I think are really important for you. Um, one is about how the revised STE standards differ from the next generation science standards. Um, Massachusetts always likes to do their own thing. So they have worked to look at these NGSS standards, but also make some changes to support the teachers in Massachusetts. So I've outlined in a table here, the Massachusetts adoption versus the NGS adoption. And what they've done in some ways is actually made it easier for a teacher to interpret. They've pulled out some of the repetitive information within them. Um, they've also helped to divide them out more so at the, um, the middle and high level, which doesn't necessarily pertain to us except for, sixth grade is an anomaly. Um, and I will tell you that, and I haven't really talked about, this pilot has been focused K-five. Um, we are doing a little bit of work sixth grade, but I feel very strongly that sixth grade needs to drive six, seven, and eight. And so we're working with the middle school on that piece as we adopt to those new standards, so. Um, and then the last thing that I think here is that, um, it's important for us and for teachers to realize that science, math, and ELA are all integrated. So in the adoption of the new science standards, we have science practice standards. So we will now have math practice standards, ELA practice standards, and science practice standards. And looking at how those all overlap. And so looking at the importance of writing in math, the importance of writing in ELA, and also the writing component of science, um, and making sure that teachers are integrating all of those. Um, but realizing that our first year may be focusing on one sign practice standards. And how do we really understand and implement and work with just this one for an entire year? Um, and then the next year go on to another one. Because that's sort of how complex these are and what a change it is in how we look at the science. And you can.
We could talk about writing and science. It's some good ideas.
And we've done, like, our middle school's done a lot of work adopting writing in science. And so again, it's kind of looking to build up backwards. Um, but even our writing curriculum, one of the unit on information writing in second grade is writing a workbook.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I hate to bring up the, the specter of budgetary constraints.
Yeah.
But just for historical reference, as we move forward with adoption, I'll support anything that Melissa and her teachers bring forward. However, um, our last textbook lasted how many years? Was it twenty?
Pluto was still a planet.
Just define lasted though.
Yeah, no, 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 it's still there.
It's still there.
Correct.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's good for holding the door open.
Yeah.
So the interesting thing to, to contemplate here is, do we have an active curriculum adoption cycle? Do we have one that we can actually sustain at the level we would desire for our students here in Flint? If we had a digital, um, prescription that we have to, um, renew every single year with site licenses and consumable workbooks, uh, there's a recurring budgetary implication. Whereas if you buy a hardcover text, sometimes you can hold your breath in waiting here.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that's educationally sound, but it's just something that we get to hide in the back of our minds.
All right. The, the other thing I wanted to mention, and I believe this to be true of science, um, is that with both our, our, for instance, our math program grades four through eight, you buy a subscription for seven years, five to seven years, and the workbooks come automatically free every year. So it's, it's sort of a one-time cost where you have the internet subscription, any updates, any changes that they find, any errors in the workbooks happen automatically. So it's, it's a longer period of time and I know Jason already knew that, so he knew the answer before he asked the question, which is a good teaching strategy.
He tends to, he tends to do that.
It's a very good teaching strategy. I just want you to know, I approve wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I think that's, that's always, I mean, whatever, whether we're talking about trays or we're talking about science curriculum. And I know that takes us quite far on our ends of the spectrum here today.
I called you out, didn't I? Sorry, Jason.
That's all right. It's before, keeps him humble.
I was, I didn't know the secret part of it.
Oh, I, I, I knew we knew the answer.
Yeah, we can dish the dust.
Well, but do you know that we have money in the budget this year for science?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, he was a big advocate of that.
So that has thirty-seven thousand dollars we're budgeted for science. And the, the scope of what we may actually have to spend is, I cannot predict because it is a huge range. Um, but, um, but I feel confident that that's more than enough for us to implement a science program for next year in this building. Um, and do it with fidelity and do it where teachers aren't feeling like, oh, I don't have this. But to do it where teachers can say, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on these pieces, but then in the middle of the year, I'll get to this piece of it and, and work their way through. But, um, but no, I mean, it's, I wish that you could say like, oh, it's going to cost you this much. But again, it's this, it's this broad spectrum. But, um, the online subscriptions range anywhere from, I think, ten years to five years. I probably would be more in support of a five-year, um, because I feel like, uh, a curriculum review cycle should be every five years. Um, I did do a calendar out for the district, looking at when we're up for review, um, just because I wanted to be able to say like consistently, like this is when we can expect budget constraints to come up around math, science, or ELA, um, so that I can share that with you and you can sort of see where those are. Um, but that was one of the things that I did last year was, you know, 'cause some of, like, the writing is a one-time cost, um, but that should come up then again in five years and look at it again, so.
Yeah, and I think that, um, I mean, clearly budget is always, always gonna be something that we have the pleasure of dealing with. Um, but, you know, to, even ten or fifteen years ago, you probably could've gotten away more with having books that were lasting fifteen and twenty years. But I mean, the pace of, of everything today, whether it be,
Absolutely.
whether it be particularly in science, but in any of the subjects. It's the, the opportunity to be able to have what the teacher is teaching be corrected, like between, I'm planning to do this in November and getting to November and it's corrected because of something that happened between, you know, September and November. It, we should be doing that in this day and age, so, um, as long as we can keep the costs to something that's reasonable and, and knowing that we have some set understanding of what our cost is and it sort of mimics the concept of, of what we've been doing with textbooks, I think that makes some sense.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all the work.
No, definitely.
So Rod goes into this. All right.
All right.
So what do you?
I'm up. Thank you. Um, I did wanna mention that I gave Christine Healy and, um, Chrissy Pruitt the night off. One of my goals is to try to treat, uh, treat my key players kindly. Um, and there's only so many things you can sit through this evening, so, um, we're gonna try sort of a rotation. Um, so I'm gonna, uh, go through the budget, the financial report tonight. Um, so, uh, before you, you have the monthly financial. Um, the good news is, uh, there's only one item of concern and that is on page six of the detail. Um, in the middle of the page, um, there is currently a deficit in, um, out-of-district special education transportation of a little over six thousand dollars, six thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, this is based on our current out-of-district, uh, population and transportation needs. Um, it's still early in the year, um, but I just wanted to let you know that that is a real number at this point in time.
But this, but this ends up going up and down based on students coming and going and
Absolutely.
and have absolutely no control over this whatsoever.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Very well done.
Other than, other than, other than it being a number that is a problem if it keeps going and it has to be dealt with.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
It's not something that we can do much about.
No, it really isn't. Um, again, it, you know, depends on student's placement. Somebody might have moved into a different placement, might require, um, more expensive transportation. Um, again, but at this point in time, that is a real number. Um, the only other item that Christine asked me to point out is for out-of-district vocational. Um, the good news is there's a surplus there of about sixty thousand dollars. Um, and that surplus is from two different sources. Um, a student who is budgeted, um, who is going to go to an out-of-district vocational program, um, and decided not to. And then a lower transportation cost due to the large number of students within the three towns going, which lowers our overall cost. Um, so at this point in time, if nobody moves in, if nothing changes, we will have sixty thousand dollars approximately that will be returning to the town. So, um, that's really the only highlight she had for the, for the monthly financial. Other than that, things are just moving along nicely. Um, you have before you a, um, FY seventeen budget development and planning schedule. Um, one of the things that I wanted to try to do was to give you a sense of what goes into actually building our budget um, and to give you a timeline of what has been going on behind the scenes in building a budget. Um, much happens before you finally see a budget in January. Um, and I'm not always sure everybody's aware of some of the things that happen. Um, we generally send out the, uh, memo to the principals, um, and they have to return in their budget the week of November ninth. Um, so we have a draft budget from all of our principals, all of our administrators, our special ed director, um, our curriculum coordinators, um, that is, is in process as we speak. Um, we're gonna have a discussion tonight about some of your goals. What would you like to see in the budget? What matters to you? Um, do you have some suggestions for us as we're building our first draft budget? Um, areas that you want us to focus on? Is it, um, additional technology? Is it, um, safety? Whatever it may be. Um, we also have, um, things that we're talking about as part of the capital plan. Um, we've had some discussions about that, um, regarding a variety of issues. Um, in December, and again, just because of the way the school committee schedule fits you at the end of the month, so yours is kind of almost overlapping with some of the way things happen. Um, but we'll be meeting, uh, throughout the month of December with all of our principals, our administrators, um, all the department heads, et cetera, um, to go through the budget. Um, what we initially get as a budget is not what you see in January. Um, what we get is, uh, what Pete may want, um, for the building. We try to work with the numbers of what, um, Melissa is suggesting for curriculum, um, some programmatic changes, some needs of our students that will come from Marie. Um, Chrissy will have some ideas about programs and plans that she may also have, professional development, et cetera. Um, all those pieces feed into one, um, budget. Um, Christine Healy will bring forward the, uh, salary summaries, which have all the listing of our teachers and if there's any steps or lane changes for our teachers, um, and any impact on, on changes, um, we'll, we'll be adding all of that information together. Um, utilities, we don't usually have a good number, um, on until a little bit later, usually not until probably March-ish, um, where we have some numbers she's a little more confident of. Um, but we'll begin to plug in some of those numbers into a budget. Um, and in January, we will actually bring that budget forward to you, um, a draft budget. Um, but in December, again, it'll be another opportunity for you, um, to think about any changes or any additions you would like us to add into the budget or if you have some things that you wanna make sure are not in the budget. Um, people, um, at various school committees have some fairly strong feelings about, um, some topics. Um, some committees are pretty open, um, to a variety of things. Don't make me laugh. Um, and in January, um, we'll be, um, bringing forward a preliminary budget. Um, sometimes it is needed to have additional budget meetings, sometimes not, it depends. Um, we will, um, have, uh, you know, I just realized, she put in here this, the Silver Lake one, not, I apologize. Boy, Lisa was off today. Um, she gave you the Silver Lake one. I kept wondering why. I kept saying building grounds of safety. This is not the elementary. It's kind of similar, but sorry about that. This is the wrong hand up. Comparable, but not quite right.
Send it around tomorrow.
Mm, I'll send it around tomorrow. Sorry about that. Um, so the, the budget meeting, sometimes there needs to be additional meetings. Um, House One, the governor's budget, will come out the fourth Wednesday in January. Um, that's a number that is very important to the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, in terms of, uh, what they may be able to support. Um, by February, you'll be doing a detailed review of the FY seventeen budget. Um, usually in January, we will try to make sure you get a copy of it prior to the school committee meeting. Um, I, that is something that was discussed and I know, um, in the past, uh, sometimes you don't get it until the night of. Um, and that's not really fair to you. So I will make every effort to hopefully help Christine along that we can have that to you as early as possible. Um, it is often coming right down to the wire to get the, the, the paper out. It is not intentional. Um, again, if there's any issues with the capital plan, um, that may be a separate warrant article. Um, we will be holding a bu- a public budget hearing. Usually we hold those in March where if the community has any questions or concerns, um, they can bring those forward. Um, and then normally in March is when, uh, the budget is actually voted. Um, usually we do have a meeting, um, in Clinton with the Finance Committee. I think it normally takes place about February, if memory serves me correctly.
I think we were late this past time.
Was it late? Was it March?
We did March. It was e- early March, I think, so I think we wanna
Okay.
gear towards February and then we may have to have a second one with them after we come back.
Okay. Okay.
We have made offers to the moderator.
Right. And, and we did have, I think Jason had reached out and said, do you want us to come in and talk about anything preliminary from an early perspective, but they didn't. Although they, they said, they did say they want us to fill out the capital planning information on the sheet that will come out in January. So we need to probably be talking about that stuff at the next meeting because I think that generally comes out at the beginning of January, it's due by the end of the month.
Okay.
So we wanna start having an idea of, of,
Capital plan for December?
what things we might want to talk to so that we can make sure that we can get that into them and, and give them that heads up.
Okay.
Like that.
Okay. Um, but again, this will give you a general idea and I apologize, I'll make sure you have the elementary one. Um, but it's, it's fairly comparable.
Okay. Uh, for the committee members, um, one, so a couple of things for the next agenda. We should talk, one, about any capital plan ideas that we might, might want to put forward. We can, hopefully we'll be able to finalize that in January and get that put down on the paper and back to FinCom. But I would also, if you can look at your calendars, I know it's a little ways out, but I'd like to look at them in December for, uh, placeholding meetings in February and March, extra ones.
Okay.
Uh, because by the time we get to late January, we're already gonna be on top of middle of Mar- February. And if we don't have to use them, then that's fantastic, but I don't wanna be trying to squeeze out a quorum. So, and I really don't wanna do, have to do just a quorum. I'd really like everybody here to, to contribute in. Um, and that we can get them sort of on the calendar and, and coalesce in with your calendar as well. Um, and that we can get them sort of on the calendar and, and coalesce and with your calendar as well to, uh, to make sure that we have them there if we need them.
Perfect. Um, so, uh, based on the, uh, current budget discussion, I wondered if any committee members had any thoughts or recommendations you would like to make, um, to us regarding what you would like to see in the budget this year? Um, are there any, um, projects that you would like us to look at? Um, that could be building-based. I mean, it could be something as simple as replacing the carpet in here. Um, to, uh, which is fine, by the way. Just using it as an example. Um, to curriculum materials, to safety issues. Um, or, um, do you like, need, uh, or need a little bit more time to think about it?
Well, I do think, I mean, this is really, it, it's low on the priority list, but I think it has a, it has a high potential cost down the road. Um, considering I noticed there are actually some, some potholes in the way out of the driveway now that we need, we need to get our hands around the parking lot in the driveway.
Okay.
Um, I would think that basic potholes, we could reach out to the highway department and ask them to fill them with their new machine that they got. Um, just thinking about that.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, but, but really, I think we need an assessment of what's going on with that and what we should really be thinking of doing and coming up with a plan.
Okay.
Whether that goes to, you know, to town meeting this year or not. I'm not really feeling particularly strong about it.
Okay.
But I don't think we know. And if we were to have to replace the parking lot, that would not be cheap.
No, it would not.
So, so before we get too, and I think it's gotten beaten up.
Okay.
So I, you know, again, in the grand scheme of educating our students, it's not really falling in that bucket.
Mm-hmm.
But unfortunately, it's one of the less sexy things that we do have to, I think, address.
Okay.
I wonder about the potential liability if we let it go as well, something twisting an ankle. Uh, if it did something worse. We have some pretty invasive plant growth coming out of a lot of those cracks right now.
Hmm.
We know as water gets in there and the temperature's dropped, those cracks are just gonna bite. So I absolutely concur with your ideas about, even though it's not necessarily an educational goal, I mean, you can get on top of that. Get ready to do something sooner or later.
And we do have a fair number of, uh, community using this space too.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and outside the community too, to the extent that we're renting the gym or anything like that. So, you know, it does get a decent amount of use.
Hmm.
Okay. So that's certainly one of them.
Okay.
And then, um, I think, you know, depending on what comes out of some of our other discussions later this evening or other things,
Okay.
we may have some items that we want to at least probably be putting in. And some of it maybe that we're putting it on sort of as a notification of things that we will need to be considering
Okay.
more so than we are going for a warrant article for it. Um, that we want FinCom to make sure that they have an understanding, a clear understanding of really five years out of things that, that we know at least in front of us today.
Sure. Anyone else?
As few surprises as possible.
Just so we don't forget as a placeholder, um, the trays.
Yeah.
Right.
It's moving forward regardless of how, how it goes.
Correct.
Hmm. Else have any other items? Um, if you come up with any thoughts, um, please feel free to email or call me. Um, and I will add it on the agenda again for December for another discussion. Um, again, behind the scenes, um, Christine is just finishing up the end of the year reports. Um, and as soon as she gets all those done, she'll start building the new budgets for next year. Um, so she's staying very busy. Um, but we'll, um, we will get to that and we will be moving them forward, um, as quickly as, as we can. Um, two other things I did just wanna mention quickly. Um, we are currently reviewing all of our emergency protocols in our district. Um, those are in-house documents. Um, each of our, um, school systems has an emergency protocol book that all the teachers have. Um, and we, every couple of years, review them, and that is with our police chief and our fire chiefs. Um, we go through the process of, um, our responses to emergencies. We're looking at all of our options. Um, those are, are in-house documents. They are not something I will be making public. I just want you to know that we are always very conscious of safety. Um, and we are reviewing everything that is out there in terms of what the needs are of our students. Um, and the police and fire are, are working with us with all the administration. So, um, it is something that is currently ongoing. It is a fairly large project, um, to do. Um, but it's, it's one of the more important ones. Safety of our children is always a priority. So that's currently ongoing. Um, and the last thing is, we updated our bullying plan. Um, the Department of Education asked us to review that and update it every two years, um, which we have done. Um, this happened in the October Professional Development Day. Um, Chrissy worked with all of our supports, um, support stuff is not the word I meant to use. All of our interventionists, that's the word I wanted. Thank you. Um, our guidance counselors, our adjustment counselors, our psychologists, um, and reviewed our bullying prevention plan. Um, the professional development that we offer, our process of handling, um, any bullying, uh, prevention, any, uh, excuse me, bullying issue that we have in district, our paperwork, um, and has updated this policy, which is on our district website. And I used the word policy and I didn't mean to use that. It is a plan. It's not a policy. Um, so again, this is sort of an in-house, uh, district, uh, process that we use. Um, it is on our website, um, and it is what we actually are using. And it's just, um, our protocol to update it every two years and also a state requirement.
Now, this seems to be bullying against odd pages today. Does anyone need an email copy of this? Or can people get it on the website?
Oh, Lord, you're right. Look at that. Isn't that bizarre? Okay, I'm sorry. Apparently it was very Monday at my office today.
Well, it just, it seems to be, it seems, I don't know if it would maybe the copy would make them.
Wow.
Um.
Sorry about that. I am so, you know, I looked at everything and it was there and that's as far as I got.
It's okay. Our folks, our folks, do we just grab it off the website or do we wanna copy via email? I'm just happy to grab it off the website.
Website, okay. So I am so sorry.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, this one. Just, just folks.
We didn't like odd numbers today. Just, just nothing to do with odd numbers.
I'm just like, why does it start limited to?
I am so sorry.
It's all right. Of course. But those are the greatest of our issues, then we're doing very well.
We're doing very well.
Okay. Okay. All right. I don't think we have, uh, anything else, but we do have executive session. So I would entertain a motion, uh, it's basically to, yeah.
Before you warn anything.
Yeah.
On the date, do you remember?
Yeah.
Should I be December twenty-fourth? They don't have early date. Fourth, do they?
We do.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they gotta note my account.
Right, these are the, uh.
You do that.
Right after Thanksgiving. Just checking, God, I asked.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, is that's, uh, conferences?
Um, actually, we're gonna be doing some professional developments around, uh, the report cards
That was a, uh, discussion development?
to make sure everybody's really comfortable with how to enter the grades with all of our new systems. So, um, that's what the focus will be in the elementary level. We had a half-day last year, um, and we were trying to find out when it would work in the schedule, and this one worked out the best. So I'm so glad you noticed it, though. Hmm.
I'll be honest, that's, that's good. Okay. Anything else? Probably should've said that to begin with. There we go.
And we're to make a motion to adjourn from regular session to enter into executive session after return.
Okay. Second, and then this should be a roll call vote. No?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Oh, how can you do that?